Be with feedback.
It's better up on stage because you're not in front of the speakers.
Yeah, that's good. All right. I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the City of Chattahoochee City Council for January ninth, two thousand and twenty four to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. I'd like to remind anyone who wants to make public comment tonight to fill out one of the yellow comment cards you see on the table by the door. You'll hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. Uh, and, and we do have a public hearing tonight, so if you have a public hearing comment or just a general public comment, be sure to designate which one of those you are doing. You can also make sure that your cell phone is turned off and, uh, stand for the public break, please.
I apologize.
United States of America. The Republic of the United States. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Bringing out their. Very next thing is to administer the oath to our two new councilpeople and to the reelected. Oh, councilmember from last, last, very sorry, yes, right, have to do the oath each time. Forgot about that.
I would ask. I don't want to get a picture. I can. I'm having our business.
There's nothing really doing it, but wait and see how it works out.
Okay.
I'm out there in a second. See if anybody pops up that needs to be admitted.
Ruby, your first.
I read to you your oath and that again, my question is all considered. Okay, raise your right hand, please. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of council member of the City of Chattahoochee Hills. I will confess my ability to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the charter ordinances and regulations of the City of Chattahoochee Hills. I am not the holder of any kind of account for public money to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I have a laws in the city of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I will perform the duties of my office without fear, favor, affection, reward, expectation thereof. Solemnly swear or affirm. I'm supposed to read. Thank you. And then read the plea. That's why, okay, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of council member of the City of Chattahoochee Hills and will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the charter ordinances and regulations of the City of Chattahoochee Hills. I am not the holder of any kind of account for public money to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I have a laws of the state of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I will perform the duties of my office without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. I solemnly swear or affirm. Congratulations.
Would you guys like to come up real quick and make a photo? Please. It's not what you can get to start. I didn't realize your husband was here. This is important stuff. Well, yes, no, he's.
He's a little fella. Just jealous, that's all.
Thank you. Read out the oath to me first and we will just not swear. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of council member of the City of Chattahoochee Hills and will to the best of my ability support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Georgia, and the charter ordinances and regulations of the City of Chattahoochee Hills. I am not the holder of any kind of account for public money to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I have a laws of the state of Georgia and prohibited from holding. I will perform the duties of my office without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. I solemnly swear or affirm, I swear.
We can fit y'all up here. Yeah. Oh, my man, you too. Whoever wants to be. Fits all along, babe.
Come in here. Oh, Jason's back. Okay.
Now that we're all official. Uh, our first, uh, agenda item was the we're doing approval agenda. Don't think there's anything we need changed or added. Anybody have any? If not, uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve the meeting agenda? Motion to approve the meeting agenda?
Okay, good.
Do you have a motion in the seconds? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Meeting agenda stands approved. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on December fifth, uh, twenty three. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve those minutes? Make a motion to approve those minutes?
Definitely.
We have a motion in the second, uh, give the folks some more. Not all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next up is a proclamation that we are doing. I'd like you to read that into the record right before Chief Argo from Palmetto, who's been head friend of the city for a long time.
You go ahead, Chief. City of Chattahoochee Hills proclamation, whereas Chief Henry Argo has worked in fire service since nineteen seventy seven, and whereas Chief Argo has served in the fire departments of Gwinnett County, Fayetteville, College Park, Rockdale County, Palmetto, and the Georgia Public Safety Training Center. And whereas Chief Argo's commitment to serving others regardless of time and place has been meaningful throughout the state of Georgia during times of crisis, including many weather-related disasters, the COVID pandemic, civil unrest, and various events requiring critical management skills working with federal, state, and local authorities. And whereas Chief Argo's service as the founder of the fire chief has provided extraordinary support to the citizens and the city of Chattahoochee Hills as this city has grown and expanded its own fire and emergency medical services. Now therefore, we, the mayor and members of the city council of Chattahoochee Hills, join with our citizens and all others to say thank you to Chief Henry Argo, now retired, for your devotion to serving others, for your professionalism and leadership, and for the difference you have made in so many lives during your fire and emergency medical medicine career spanning a total of forty seven years. Signed, Ernestine.
Thanks, Chris. I don't know if people know this, but, uh, as he's retiring, stepping out of the stepping out of the service that he's been doing for so long, and he's actually taking on the head administrator role at the City of Palmetto, which is jumping into the fire, so I, I don't know if that's a wise choice on his part. All right, uh, next up are public comments. Time decisions to share information with the man's city council. Provide their opinion and input on any subject that's not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Uh, again, be sure that you specify. When your name is called, please come forward, speak into the microphone directly to the council, per city or name and address of the director. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Is there any public comment?
Uh, we do, Mr. Mayor, first Renee Prince.
Happy New Year. Renee Prince, one three zero one five Hamilton Road. Um, congratulations, Ruby, Scott, and Rodney, and y'all women in the seat. I understand that the city was in a contract with Fulton County in twenty 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 one or twenty twenty three to run our election. Um, I'd like to really talk about the, um, the paper ballots if I could. And if I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong on the total charge, but I think for both years it cost the city almost twenty thousand dollars. It could be some off on that. If the council did on the agenda to discuss, um, to vote no to further elections and perhaps go back to paper ballots, that money could be used for other things such as medical services or maybe some equipment that our public safety may need. Um, there's another thing that I'd like to talk about, um, some of the citizens that's reached out have, have an inquiry about the at the beginning and again at the charter school. Um, is there going to be any signs that will be posted prior to the, the cameras being implemented? From the charter school, do we know anything?
Um, Chief, would we do, we'll talk about that in, when he's in conversation.
Oh, okay, great, thanks. Um. Um, I'm going to talk about the movie studio for just a moment. Um, I just hope that I'm going to talk to y'all for a moment. Um, I know that with the movie studio, they've been with us, I think, for a couple, a couple of years, maybe, or a year and a half, going back and forth with this and stuff. I hope that somehow that the city can put on their application finances about how they will come up with finances and paper stuff. And I understand that the property belonged to the Hennessys. Um, and I feel sorry for them because the deal what didn't go through and that, um, they're back at square one. But it's so important that the city, um, asks these questions. Where, where are they getting their money at? I mean, we're talking about a lot of money taking place and with the movie studio, um, them buying the property. There should have been some way or another that they knew that the property wasn't going through.
That does make sense.
But I just hope that our eyes can be open a little bit more. Pardon me, oh, I just hope that the city's eyes can be open a little bit more when developers come in. Um, especially if they want to buy some property here in Chattahoochee and, and, you know, start asking, start making changes, dummy laws and stuff like that. You know?
Next, have Robert Richardson, who's asked that his comments be, um, read into the record. My name is Robert Richardson and I live at nine four two five Huxleyson Ferry Road. Chattahoochee Hills does not currently have a procedure for a citizen to file a formal complaint against a city employee. I urge the city council to come up with such a procedure. With that being said, let this be considered both an oral and written formal complaint against the following city employees. Richard Lindsay, in executive session, Mr. Lindsay presented evidence in the form of a signed witness statement to the city council. Also arguments on personnel matters, including whether to impose disciplinary actions was discussed. Both these actions mandated open meetings for OCGA fifty fourteen three B two. Mr. Lindsay also denied me from presenting more evidence by ignoring two written requests that I made to appear before the city council. Also, Mr. Lindsay did not properly advise the council of all available options, as was pointed out by Councilman Bettis in his closing statements at the city council meeting. Councilwoman Ruby Foster on two occasions urged me to keep fighting because she said that I had been treated wrong by the city. This is important in that it implies three of the council members felt I had been done wrong, yet no action or vote was taken. Robbie Rockovitz, Mr. Rockovitz threatened me on social media and then verbally assaulted me in a meeting in city hall, including an additional threat saying that I would never get another permit in the city. In the before-mentioned executive session, Mr. Rockovitz presented a signed witness statement that resembled a high school creative writing class assignment that included twenty six verified lies. And then, in my opinion, any competent attorney would pick apart in five minutes. Dana Witcher, Ms. Witcher falsified her witness statement after being told what to write by city officials. I not only have an eyewitness of her telling me she falsified her statement, but I have an audio recording of her admitting to me that she falsified her statement. Mike Morton, Mr. Morton falsified his witness statement by omission of facts. In other words, if you heard Mr. Richardson question Mr. Rockovitz about his social media comments, then you obviously heard Mr. Rockovitz verbally assault Mr. Richardson, and he failed to report that in his state. Saying Sergeant, the sergeant falsified her witness statement and she was told what to write by city officials. Take note that her statement matched none of the other eight statements. Mayor Tom Reed, the mayor failed to familiarize himself with the rules of executive session, and therefore the meeting was not conducted according to the official code of Georgia. I realize these are serious accusations against city employees, but I have one hundred percent proof to back up every accusation, accusation in the form of eyewitnesses, audio tapes, and emails. I urge this new city council to listen to the accusations and educate yourself on Georgia open records and meeting laws and take appropriate action. As final public comment.
Thanks. Uh, before we move on, I want to recognize a former mayor that was standing in the room. Uh, Jenna, who was mayor for a day back when she was seven years old. And I'm absolutely certain that she is at that age where she loves being called out, so I just wanted to do that for a second while she was sitting in the room. I can see it much behind your hands, so. Uh, next up is staff reports. We start with a major update from Mississippi.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff, and then as Daryl was saying, beautiful citizens of Chattahoochee Hills, I'm going to say this time.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Uh, I'd like to echo Renee's comments and about what we knew, the new council members and the returning, uh, council member officer. I know they're not new to the city because they've been involved. Uh, Mr. Peak is, you know, many commission former council member, longtime resident, Mr. Lycie, many commission members. So these are not new faces, new to the council, so, uh, we use your staff and work hard to, you know, help you get activated to your new roles. And we're here for you. What are our financial reports? I would like to, uh, before I do this, everybody knows I'm a big proponent of professional development. And when staff ask me if they can, you know, have some professional development, as long as it's within reason, I, I hope hardly agree. And so recently you got an email from me and it was about a municipal revenue administration certificate that our own finance director, Michelle Collins, received. And so she now, so that was the George Municipal Association, so she attended class. I agree too also because she was going up to Mollins, not the ground, the city of Canton was part of the, the training as well as hell, so it's, oh, okay, Canton's good. And but to, what she completed is, um, she also, the courses were like add the lower tax one-on-one, liquid tax collection, government side revenue, uh, sources one-on-one, occupational tax and regulatory fees. So then most of this she can take some work off there. Alcohol, exercise tax and license fees and customer service and internal patrol, so. That's, that's a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort away because she, you know, still had her job to do here, so she was having to keep up with those duties as well, which included, you know, sometimes lunch hours and nights and weekends and then data entry and that kind of stuff in order to do this, so. Just wanted to reach out and, and let you know about that and congratulate her for accomplishing that specifically. And she wants to do the finance report as finance director and I told her, that's great, but in the charter I have to do it, so. And she gives me the data, I, I run the data, I look at it, I assess it and analyze it and try to put it in some sort of form that's really good for you guys to understand. And so again, we're still working through that because we have new software, but, uh, I use bigger font this time. Again, we'll get better and better with each of the financial report. But you'll see that the, the first, uh, part is revenue. So we have revenues and expenditures. So revenue starts off with a general fund. Goes through each area, always probably taxes all the way down to, um, where we are with our, our fund balance inside, so. We're at fifty percent, I did it at fifty percent to the year or over that now, but we've collected about seventy-three percent of of, of revenues, so I'm sorry, we're going to have seventy-seven percent for revenues. And that includes what looks like a fun balance. Uh, we're over in some accounts because he always liked a little bit more. Um, not, that's listed here. This is a, a good, um, message to share with you is we just paid off the lease to our equipment that we received, uh, Public Works equipment that we got back in two thousand and sixteen. Remember that? When Daryl first started, he comes up to the council and say, hey, can I have, you know,
I familiar.
Four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to buy some equipment. He says, sure. So we send Daryl up every time we need something. But it's that equipment that back in two thousand and sixteen is now paid off, and so we, we don't need it. Going down, limit for hotel motel tax, that's due November. When you see, and again, this is, I like to repeat it for original council and new council, when you see these numbers in hotel, motel, and T-Swaps, those are two months behind, maybe, because, you know, we don't, they don't, we don't get the grant until two months after this, so. When you see that number, it might look a little low to you, just remember it's two months behind, so that's due November. And you're, uh, fifty-four percent though, through November, even though that wasn't fifty-three years. So we have two more months of, of revenue that's come in there, hotel, as well as T-Swaps. And so it looks like it's a little bit behind thirty-five percent of T-Swaps, but we're more likely well over fifty percent for T-Swaps because getting two, two, uh, two months. And it gets into the expenditures, and I can go deep, a deeper dive on expenditures, doing the same thing I did before, the whole report, I just kind of covered, you know, the departments, city council, and police, fire, engineering, all that kind of stuff. So you'll see fifty-five, about fifty-five percent of, of our funds and also leave that service, like fifty-five percent and fifty percent to the fiscal year. It's, it's pretty close to normal. Again, with hotel motel tax, nothing that jumps out really. Uh, for us, we are, um, we are spending money in, in the commission and business bureau, and so they're using their money importantly and, and within confines of the law. And again, T-Swaps, so there's nothing really out of the ordinary, uh, probably taxes are, are, are collected in full, I'm not, you know, finished typing, but we, we raised a hundred percent of them. But I'd be glad to talk about any specific kind of finances without committing to great detail, but if you have any questions about any of that, then within the financial report, with that in. And positive temperature in here, by the way, I know that you have to hear something all day because you're not.
I'm here, I don't know about the conference.
One, one.
Okay, I'm.
I smell finance, but I'm going to. I got it.
Have you have any questions, first? If not, uh, we will move on to a update from the fire chief. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Is everybody enjoying the weather? For the record, I got nothing to do. Yeah, hey, but I'm going to give you some information. Everybody doesn't ask, uh, what was our rainfall? Three point zero nine inches. The river currently is rising, expected to crest. Now I just looked at it on the computer. Uh, and we're just under seventeen feet, so we're beyond flood stage, but we're not uh, necessarily in the dangers. I don't think anybody remembers two thousand and nine, us closing the bridge with a foot of water over the cap, sperry bridge. If you had to jump in that water, it's forty-seven degrees and flowing at eighteen thousand nine hundred cubic feet per second. And that discharge rate continues to grow, so I think we're going to, we're still going to see.
We can't get home.
Um, so they have wind advisory that you all, uh, have seen mentioned was canceled earlier today. We are grateful. Fire department and Public Works very grateful when the ground is so saturated. Tops of the trees might have extra weight on them and you start having upwards of fifty mile per hour gusts, you have trees coming down. And I know everybody down here is glad to have power and, you know, and so we're excited for that. When you're driving on these roads, uh, in our city, um, especially the gravel roads, uh, on, in fire out rest, you're removing trees or responding on EMS calls, you are grateful for the really great job of our Public Works. And I'm here to tell you, um, Aaron, in, in that kind of rain, you expect some kind of wash and erosion, and yet I was on them this morning and didn't see any amount of that. Um, some places, but where you would expect it, but they, they rise, if, if not better than our asphalt roads. You want to know how good they ride? Get in a fire truck and roll up and down and your jawbone is shaking around. Um, in the report that I've given you, uh, I have, um, changed the format a little bit. I hope it'll please everyone. We wanted to provide more comprehensive incident, uh, data. And so, uh, always occurring from now on down on the left side, we're providing more information there on the types of calls uh, that we run, fire EMS and so forth, as well as give you information about inspections and plan review. Um, I guess speaking more to the folks behind me, um, frequently, people don't realize that fire department is heavily involved in plan review, uh, to understand if the commercial properties and developments fit to the fire code. So we spend quite a bit of time looking at things, um, from, you know, what we thought was going to happen with Kane's studio to, you know, a, a residential development. So I want you to see that work as well. Um, generally speaking, uh, our year ended with the same numbers, with, with, with good numbers, nothing extraordinarily hot. I did give each of you a, um, chart that I maintained there that represents the type of calls. Uh, as an NBC and Denver Medical Transport. So if you look at that trend line, say, over time, you see everything's pretty well increasing. And so that is a big part of why I advocate for strategic planning that we might know where, what our status quo is now and what we need to do today to be prepared for tomorrow, one year, three years, five. Particular interest, um, might be to you that, um, in this second legislative, in this legis, year's legislative session, there are two bills that are likely to be merged, I think, uh, House Bill one twenty-four and Senate Bill sixteen. And here's, here's what they might need to view. If this law, uh, as far as EMS services, um, and transport services is amended, uh, it'll mean that, it, it could mean that our city will need to begin to, to develop our own, um, tran, ambulance or transport service or look at sharing a service like that with a neighbor in jurisdiction. Um, and so it, it, it can be burdensome, uh, financially at the outset, but I think everybody knows what sort of difficulties we've had, had to manage, uh, over the years from AMR being the, the ambulance service to now Grady. Um, we're still hovering around fifteen to sixteen minute response time from dispatch to having an ambulance on scene, and, uh, that is still really more than double of what you would like to aim as far as the national average. Um, but, um, it comes with costs, so we will be looking at, at, at that. We talked a little bit about it already, got some cost projections. And, um, there again, in terms of strategic planning, something like that comes about, uh, then we would have to be positioned, you know, early on to begin to, to handle that. And I just want to add a little footnote to that. You all know that a few years ago I coached everybody to use the term transport capable emergency response unit. Couldn't call it an ambulance because we don't have a state license to transport or run an ambulance person. But I can't tell you how many times among our cohorts in some of the south Fulton departments that we've been held up as an example of a city that had some foresight to put an ambulance type of response vehicle that can transport under certain criteria, and we have. And it has many other advantages. It carries additional equipment for various other types of, of incident response. So, um, I, I take a lot of pride in the fact that you all, uh, and others before you helped to, uh, make that progress. Finally, in that report, I tried to give you just a little bit of friendly, um, update on what seems to be occurring as far as hospitals and ED, uh, emergency development, department involvements. Um, flu being the biggest thing, RSV, the, um, respiratory central virus, really for younger children, has, has fallen way off. COVID has, has not really hurt as much of a problem. Pneumonia, you know, is in there somewhere. Covid has, has not really been as much of a problem. Pneumonia, you know, is in there somewhere. Um, it's coming in mostly during age universes, but, um, but the flu type A and B has, it seems to have more problems than anyone else. So I just give you a few pointers on how to cut that, cut back the probability that you'll come down with that cold or whatever it may be. That's what I'm. And.
Take some time and see.
All for me.
Public Works. I took a lot of beautiful people.
Thank you.
I don't follow that. That's like. You Greg and Kevin.
Great.
The evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. Uh, before you have, you have the, uh, the monkey report, um. One of the things I wanna, a couple of things I wanna go over, um, the last couple of months have been talking about the number of traffic accidents that we were seeing. Um, last month, I, also because of the holidays, I really focused on patrolling, and that really helped. We only had four accidents last month. So that's a good thing. Um, we did some, we had a lot of dispatch calls. We had one of our. Programs that we offer is a vacation house check program that we've been doing for a few years now. It seems like everybody took advantage of that over the holidays. Uh, because we did a lot of them, but that's fine. We enjoy doing that. Um, but our, a lot of our calls for service were up, almost doubled from last year. Um, our reports were doubled. So we're, we're, we're seeing a lot of, um, a lot of activity. A lot of things are, are growing as, as we grow. We are fully staffed once again. Um, so that's, that's helped. Um, both of the officers that were sworn in are now out of FTO and on single patrol, so they're back, they're on their, um, full-time shifts. So that's good. Um, to answer your question, Ray, um, I was, I'm giving that update on the charter school anyway. Uh, so if you recall, we went into a, an agreement with Blue Light Solutions. I had a meeting with them. Last week, is it when we had it? Is it?
It was last week.
When, okay, anyway, um, just to, to go over what the next steps are, what, what can we expect in kind of timelines? So right now, we are in the, uh, in, in the permitting process because the, the cameras are considered a, a radar, they're a lidar. Which is a, a laser. It has to be put in our permit. Our permit is good for four years. I just renewed it before we went into, um. Agreement with them, so they have to renew the, the, uh, permit. It's not that big of a deal. It's just sending the, the proper paperwork to the state and then signing off on it and. And the right people signing off. It's, it's not a big deal. They then need to have the superintendent of Fulton County Schools to sign off on it. Again. Don't anticipate any issues with that because their program, specifically Blue Light Solutions. Is in city itself, I think Fairburn just, just did one, and I think Jones, so he's already signed off on theirs. There's no reason to sign off on ours. Um, and then they need DOT to sign off on it, even though. And again, that shouldn't be an issue because it's in on the state route. So DOT should just, you know, sign it, but we all know how DOT responds to things. Um, specifically to answer your question, Renee, there will be warrant signs. Um. Don't quote me on this, but I think they said for. Receding and. Uh, receding from the school in, in both directions and for. Um, as you leave the school, so a total of sixteen. Uh, warning signs starting at five hundred feet and moving in. It will have the flashing lights with the, with the timeframes of the school. So there will be several warnings before you actually get to the camera. Um, to slow down. Um, they will start installing the, the system. Once the permits and stuff, they expect sixteen to ninety days.
Yeah.
I just finished, I mean. Um, hopefully before the end of the school year, but one of the things that I, when I was speaking with them is that if we can't make it. By, by law, anytime you change the speed limit or you introduce, um, a new speed detection, you have to give thirty day. Window of grace period, if you wanna call it that way. What I didn't want is that thirty day grace period to be in June. Or July because there's no school. And then when parents come in the first day of school, they're getting hit with tickets.
It's smart.
I, I think that's very scary. So if they can't have the thirty day warning. Grace period by the end of the school year, we're gonna do it at first, the first of the school year, and then. A month after school starts, start hitting on my dad's vacations. Um. So I can't hear your question. Okay, so, okay, yeah, um. So, yeah. Um, you know, that's actually all I have. Do they have any questions?
Okay.
Just have a comment. Sure, and if I'm gonna say it, if it's correct, based on what's happening currently. Just based on some social media, just some words going around. About to include this, what is it? Need to get a hold of this department, this department. Uh, no matter what the circumstance, but if it's non- emergency, whatever. It's just. Uh, once you get off. Be sure that you ask for Chattanooga Hills Police. Uh, because, because of where we're located, occasionally you will get your call picked up by Douglas County Dispatch or the Blue County Dispatch. And you wanna be sure that you're going to Fulton County to get the Chattanooga Hills. And again, the quickest way to do that is just to ask. One of the other things is that the, the dog issue, right? We've had this conversation many times before. We, if Fulton County has called, if you call Fulton County, you know. We get billed whether or not they find the dog, which they almost never do, and it's an exorbitant fee. Now, they've got a nice new animal shelter, and that's great, but. We still would like everybody to call nine one one, ask for our officers. To come, number one, they're much more likely to be able to find the animal in the first place if they can take care of it, they can take care of it. Uh, we've got the relationship with Coto's. We can bring things to Fulton County ourselves, and if Fulton County has to come, we can tell them exactly what the dog is. And it just saves the city a ton of money. So again, both of us still listening. Are just something I wanna remind people of all the time because. I see complaints sometimes. Oh, we're trying to call the non- emergency number, blah, blah, blah. We got Douglas County, we gave up. But never give up. Call nine oh one. There's for our guns. Anything I got wrong?
No, no, that's, that's, yeah, you were, especially with the, the dog. The dog thing is, um, yeah, you're right, uh. I saw, I saw the state post, several people calling animal control directly, um, you know, and then. They'll tell, they'll tell them, you know, the three, four hours will show up and, oh, we didn't get the dog, and then we get a bill for eighty-five dollars.
Really? And it's, it's that.
And I'm not exaggerating.
It's that crazy. They know the box, they come down and. And, and they never find the dog anywhere. So. And the problem sometimes is the, the same dog will get called in three or four times. Okay, now we have four times. You see, dog, guy, he's. And it's, it's, yeah, it's a great, obviously, they've done, they've done help, but not the dog warrants, right? Anyway, that was it. Anybody, anybody else?
Okay, and I do appreciate, uh, I say that, um, officers running the network, which I do appreciate. That's what it takes. Keep grabbing around, keep following them, and we'll go. You and our mess. Thank you.
All right, we have a public works report next from.
Derek Winlock.
Generally, the high point of any. Yes, yes. Hello, uh, Mayor and Council and Bronny. Can't do it like I did, Ronny. Beautiful city. He tried it, just didn't get the same effect, didn't. Uh, I wanna first of all, start by saying, uh, to the residents. You know, pretty much every car has. Uh, on your dash somewhere, tells you what the temperature is. So if it's thirty-two degrees or lower, when you're driving at night, slow down because more likely to go be ice on the road this time of the year. Uh, there, we have bridges and, you know, this time of year, we got plenty of salt. We are always ready every year, um. Already got a call about ice on the road, so just be warned. If you get in your car and you sit thirty-two degrees and you know we've had rain day before and there's a lot of moisters. They fall back. And so just, just kind of be cautious with that. It's just a warning, uh, if you may. Uh, also, uh, I wanna touch on what Greg was talking about earlier. I know that you, uh, everyone hears us talk a lot about how we work well together. So this morning, early this morning, I was here final talk, uh, the storm coming through, the rain, the heavy rain. Uh, I, I'm notified before anybody. Greg calls me because he's in contact, so we'll stay on top of that. And I always count on Brad. He lets me know where we're at. He's got all the shit here. It's fire, um, it's fire guys out there taking care of business till I get here. And I got some phone calls. I've been getting a lot of phone calls from the PD lately, which has been really good. A lot of communication back and forth with them. Let me know about the deer in the roads, uh, animals, trash being dumped on roads, um. Debris and so, and such, and just like, I gotta, gotta call that day. Another, if. The G dot owns the South Pole Parkway, all the way through until catch fair, until highway seventy down the bridge. That's not only six and hours. That's G dot's, but if you wait on G dot, you can be waiting a while. So. Not what we're responsible to do, but we do. I got a call that night. There was ice on the bridge before we get a cup of meal. On the Parkway, which is a nine-hour bridge, goes to our city though, but we were out there with ice on the bridge. I got a call. It was really, really early in the morning. And I'll say, man, I hate to call you, but I don't wanna wait on G dot. They'll, they'll never come, and I hate to have somebody in our citizen, uh, city, or anybody, to that matter. Uh, just wanna say thank you to Greg, really. That's, he's huge for it. Y'all don't, y'all don't realize what he does? Lord have mercy, he keeps me, he keeps me, and he gives me all this information sometimes to Greg. My brain ain't but this big, but. I'm just getting, let me get this out. That's, that's what I usually say. Um, Public Works, no more, no more, no more operations. Uh, we're still cutting the right away, back this, what we did this time of the year, every year. Uh, rain slowed us down a little bit, but we, we're still continuing on. Uh, Parks and the Parks Department, uh, have a meeting tomorrow with the contractors or the pre-construction meeting. For the Riverlands, uh, bathhouse, a big. So they all invited every contractor, whoever's gonna be involved. If you're gonna be putting shovel, you're gonna drive a nail. I want you there because we want it done the way the city wants it done, and, uh. They, they've been awesome, and they really have. They've done a lot of work in our parks. The one for volunteers and for what they're doing, we'd be in trouble, really would. Uh, that's all I really have. Unless y'all got questions for me?
When they go stop paying?
When they go stop paying? Weather. It, yeah, and, and you're right. They, I'm just gonna lay it out. They felt, they felt, they felt, they felt this. Man, they should have done, they should have, we had all the agreements. They started bringing material, then they just slowed down. And I know they were busy at this time of the year for, for them. That's what they do. But we should have been started a long time ago.
Yeah, we're waiting to.
And now we have to wait because if we're put down now, it's like, if you notice, on a lot of the roads now, you send a lot of potholes. There's nothing we can do this time of the year because cold patch doesn't stick. It's, it's gotta be warm for it, the heat, heat. And I wish we'd had some of these roads covered, some of the roads, but. Soon as we get fifty, fifty degree and rising for a few days a period, this is when they're gonna get started. They got the material here. We was waiting on them to get started. I guess so. Thank you all.
Take the resume.
And something is a community development department every morning.
Mayor and Council will be briefly out in front of each school. Uh, report pages instead of just one, because we finished the calendar year. So you got December numbers again. Uh, calendar year numbers, um, you can see.
Can't tell much building.
In December, we issued exactly the same number of permits we'd issued in the previous December, which is in X twelve. Um, but four of those twelve issued were due in one of those, uh, a year ago, something like that. Otherwise, generally, on, on, on par inspections are. Were up in the month. Um, year over year, though, uh, for twelve month calendar year. Um, permits were down about twenty percent, uh, two fifty-four last year versus two hundred this year. Um, and then new, uh, total new dwellings of, of various kinds. We had ninety last year and fifty-six this year, so. Quite a bit of a slowdown, reflecting the general economy and the, the higher interest rates. Um, you see overall permit totals down, um, and COs and inspections down. So. So generally, a slower year, but we were about on a par, um, for the month of, month of December. Um, the only thing I wanted to mention is, uh, planning commission meeting this month is, has been canceled. Uh, for lack of, um, items for the agenda, so there won't be a planning commission meeting this month, so, um. The, the three remaining members will get the, the evening on and. See you next month. Any questions?
Thanks, David. Because of the next thing. Actually, no. Why, yeah, we'll leave the description first. Um, because the next thing is a public hearing on item twenty-three dash oh five nine, which we're gonna defer. But I think before the public hearing, which has that anyway because it's scheduled, uh, you should give a brief explanation of the property.
Um, this is the proposal to expand the ceremony, fix two tablet by two hundred and two point eight three acres. The property is located in Sardis Road at the Corrida County line. Um, uh, it connects to the existing hamlet, um, at the west end of the. Most recently rezoned property, which was known as the, the Simpson, uh, parcel. This application comes without a, a concept plan, um, so it's just, um, uh. Open land, um, because it serves as open space, but no development can take place until they get a concept plan approved by city council. Um, but the, uh, development rights that come with that property could be applied elsewhere in the hamlet. And in fact, um, I, my understanding of the intent of the applicant is that they would not be applying two hundred on that property, but also. The trunk anyway would be applied elsewhere. But at this point, as I say, no development on that site, uh. Without approval by city council, um, concept plan. Uh, I, I did wanna bring up one thing that I, um, I didn't mention in the, um, in the work session. Oh, I should mention the planning commission, uh, had a public hearing. At their last meeting where they recommended by, by zero for, for approval. Um, there was one, um, condition. That was, um, added by the planning commission, which may be a little confusing if anybody's, um, paying attention to the discrepancy in land law references in the original application materials. Must be clarified or corrected. Um, that was done. The only discrepancy in there was, um, most people know what land law is. It's actually. All of the state is divided into a bunch of squares, basically. And, um, I never read on the questions, some of the materials include two land law numbers, some of them literally one. Um, we had them, um, supply, um. New materials with the corrected information. I left it to the engineers to tell us which was the real answer, but you can see in your packet everything now references to. So that's all. That's correct. That's correct. The applicant, um, um, identified, it's shown on the map. There's an overlap in the legal descriptions of their property and. The rear property lines of the parcels to the east in front of Watkins Road. And, um, the applicant is contacting all those property owners, um, with a proposal to, um. Give them back that little strip of property, um, uh, uh, so it would clear up their title, it could clear up title on both sides. Um, but with an agreement that the, um, bumper that's required for any development that may eventually take place in the property would be measured from the original property line. Uh, which is the property line of what they paid for in. But those, that, that work hasn't been done. Um, they haven't been able to, um, I guess, contact all the property owners yet, so, uh, the request is for any.
We have any public?
Uh, we do not, Mr. Mayor, so I would, uh, recommend, uh, per reading the.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just go ahead and within the public hearing. And given that we have no comment, I'm really not close to public hearing. And again, because we're not acting on this, I will take a motion in a second to defer action. Until the, uh, the lot line issue has been resolved.
Motion to defer item twenty-three dash oh five nine.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor of deferring until that issue is solved, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Uh, all right, so that's what we stand on twenty-three dash oh five nine. Next up is an item two. Uh, rezone, uh, piece of property on Cochran Mill Road to the Village. Uh, because we don't have a public hearing on this, I don't even think that we need to discuss it much further. Uh, there are a couple of outstanding issues here. One is the development agreement, governance, how the TDRs are going to work is still in process. Everybody agrees that we wanna wait for that to be done until we act on this one. Uh, there are a couple of other outstanding issues that have come up in the, uh, planning zoning commission that we also want to finalize. Uh, before we act on this and the developers in agreement as well. So if I could get a motion in a second, please to defer twenty-three dash oh four four.
Make a motion to defer twenty-three zero four four.
Second. We have a mayor before, uh, take a vote on that. Can we either have a date certain or a condition when this will be brought back up?
Uh, let's go ahead and just defer it to next month, and then we'll defer it again when you do.
Can we give him a motion in a second?
I'm sorry, yeah, can I get a motion in a second, again, on that as a.
I'll make a motion from twenty-three zero four four as a.
Get that motion in second. Any discussion on that? If not, all of those in favor of adopting twenty-three dash oh four four deferred until next month, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Uh, we have a couple of new business items. Uh, first is a first read on an ordinance to amend the charter, uh, basically to change the way that, uh, or change who's allowed to serve on our commissions. This is something that can get addressed previously, but because the notification requirements much correct for this type of thing, it's here for us. Again, Dana, do you want to talk about this all? Or either one, Dana?
Um, sure. This was, um, an ordinance to change the charter, um, regarding the commission residency requirements. It was passed at the November meeting. I was filing the paperwork and that's when I realized we had not advertised it in the legal organ. So we have started the process over and it has been advertised.
Okay. Uh, and again, there's no, uh, on this today. So if anybody has any questions for Dana, maybe have them, but we'll talk about this again at the next work session. At the next meeting. Uh, all right. Next item is twenty-four dash oh oh two, which is, uh, issue about some overpaid excess taxes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, a few weeks ago, um, CERMBE and Farmhouse, their accounting department contacted me to let me know that due to an error in their accounting financial software, they had overpaid their taxes and they requested a refund in the amount of two thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and sixty cents be given to them because of this oversight.
Yep. And again, to undo that payment, regardless of the circumstances requires council approval. We probably would have figured this out in our own audit and be doing the same thing in several months if they hadn't. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh two, which is the refund of that alcohol access tax overpaying?
Motion to adopt twenty-one dash oh two.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-three or twenty-four dash oh two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh oh three, which is a resolution to allow me to execute a document uh, for an application or a, uh, branch, a grand family guy. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council and beautiful people.
There you go.
There you go.
Um, I'm coming with you this evening to present an opportunity for the city to apply for uh, a grant through the Fulton County Arts and Culture Commission. Uh, this is specifically called municipal support funds, which is, uh, allocated to the sites for municipal governments. Um, we're seeking, uh, twenty thousand dollars. It's a fifty-fifty grant. It's a good way to leverage public funds to, uh, bring additional arts and, uh, and culture in the community. And, uh, the program that I've been working with, uh, Councilmember Foster for last, you know, several weeks. Uh, we're titling the Chattanooga Hills Culture and Arts Pilot Program. We're hoping to, uh, start this up in the Cedar Grove Community Center. Um, and it will cover, uh, the expenses associated with bringing in, um, trade instructors to assist um, participants in the program with, uh, performance arts, visual arts and other types of, uh, art cultural mediums. So I think that's a great opportunity to further, um, extend the, uh, the arts and cultural related activities already engaged in by the city and, uh, development agency further.
I just want to say thanks to Chris. Chris started on with a decent move.
Yes.
And I think I started knocking on his door about grants and stuff for the city. Uh, this was one of the grants that I saw last year that we didn't have anymore here to actually help us, uh, apply for. So I appreciate all your work and everything.
Thank you. This is one of many, um, important grants for the police department, fire department for community development. Um, it's an exciting opportunity to bring, um, outside resources to actually aid some of the plans we have for, for the long term. I don't care often. Good. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh three, which is the resolution uh, that lets us apply for this grant?
I have a motion that we adopt twenty-three dash zero zero three.
Second.
With a motion in a second, any discussion? If not, uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh three, this grant application, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Uh, next up is a resolution on a local amendment, uh, on plumbing code update to align with DCA requirements. Katie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, so the city of Chattanooga, this is part of the North Georgia Water Planning District. And, um, to make it all so short, the Georgia EPD has put together, um, this management plan, uh, it's pretty much states we have to follow certain guidelines and part of that, uh, we are required to update certain things in our code periodically to make sure that, um, we are most updated on, um, water conservation, efficiency. And this is one of the requirements of the Georgia EPD uh, to update. This is just a, a local amendment uh, for water efficiency. So, uh, part of this, the first step of this requirement is, uh, is what we're doing tonight. Uh, we'll set it to DCA, uh, they'll review it for sixty days and then they'll formally adopt it again after that. But this amendment will be added to the, to the end of chapter eight for buildings and building regulations. So we, um, article four, miscellaneous provisions. It'll create a new section, which is section seventy-four, local amendment to plumbing code for water efficiency. Um, staff recommends approval, um, because it is required for, for the state of.
There you go. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-four dash oh four, the required change to our plan, uh, from the state? But a motion. A motion in a second. Any discussion about this? If not, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh four, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is twenty-four dash oh five, which is the approval of the twenty-twenty-four schedules for the historic commission, planning commission. Uh, these guys set their own meeting schedules, but they have to be approved by the city council. And so this is, uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt those schedules that they put forward?
Make a motion to say.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this? If not, uh, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash oh five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is Mayor and Council comments, and I, uh, have always kind of moved back and forth across the room. I think this time I'm starting with Robbie P. Bill. All right. Welcome to the council. Anything you'd like to say?
I'm. I look out here and I want to say thank you everybody for showing up. Thank you for district five, allowing me this chance to serve district five and the city. And it's exciting. I'm excited. There's so many things about our city to be excited for. Um, I sat up here, the last time I sat up here was in twenty-eleven, believe it or not. There were few faces that were still here, that were here back then. Mike and Rick and Dana. And there's some new faces here too. I look forward to getting to know them better. Chris and Kevin and, you know, Greg. Robbie and Daryl. And Daryl, there's a kudo to you. Cause me and my dad drive the dirt roads quite frequently. And he grew up here. He's been here a long time. He says that they've never been better.
Thank you.
So kudos to you people.
Thank you.
With a paid off motivator.
Paid off motivator.
And always thank you to the public safety and the reason we're here. I look forward to, um, the future, working with our city and making great things happen.
Welcome to Rodney and Scott and your families. Um, good to see y'all here today. And I was, I just had one comment because I was driving home today this morning and, um, I'm like, oh God, there's Daryl. Something is broken. And, um, I turned around and went back and I thought, what is he working on? Yeah, we're two inches into the three point oh nine inches of rain or something. And, um, I, I was like, I'd rubble went down. I'm like, what's, what are you doing? He's like, oh, I'm just meeting with the sewage folks, you know, and I'm like, of course you are managing the process. So anyway, I just had.
There you go.
I thought about saying that today because I know you've been working hard and up early. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to be here. Thank you. Thank you to the residents of, of my district for electing me. So pleased to be, uh, continue being involved. I've been on the zoning commission. And, uh, I think we had a productive work session today. We're beginning to talk about some of the ways that, that, uh, we can make changes to, to benefit our residents, all of our residents. And, um, some of the board and that work and, and it's, it's kind of nice to start a new thing.
I wanted you both to come up with a photo before, so we'll restage that whole thing. Or, I mean, I don't know if you want to be up there. You know, the kids sometimes want to step in. Uh, Richie?
Yeah, guys, it's good to see everybody here. New year. Um, you know, we did have a, a pretty productive workstation, I think, on the process, just like, I guess. Hopefully things will be more ABC. For damage first can understand how, how these decisions are made and the process goes with it. Um, I guess, Rick, where are we going? I mean, do we need to entertain Mr. Richardson or do we just listen to him and let him do what he does or? Cause I mean, at some point there has to be a need. Subcouncil. We kind of subcouncil whether or not they want to hear it and, and, I will position this council. This man's been has been having a problem for a year, been heard. And I say after a year, he's probably not going anywhere. So I don't know why we just don't give the man the say. First, remember, right, and be done with that chips following the man. But I mean, I said, so we need three guys to. Right. Great. We can't do it tonight. No, and I understand. I would just like to go ahead and get this thing done if all possible. If this council wants to maintain that. We will probably have to. Do that, put it on next month, month after, just be done with it going.
We're putting on the agenda sometimes.
And, um, to Greg, um, you're right. You remember we we battled for a long time to get that little transport truck. And it rolled on. He was, he was the one we had to beat up to get. Cause I was good. Um, but anyway, no, I know, um, Daryl, city staff. I know y'all weren't, Kevin, I appreciate the courage around the ring. But I do want to zoom in. So I got, and I heard an awful room. Kirby's talking to the Falcons, praying that's.
Don't do it. Don't do it. Yeah. Say amen. Go dog.
Hey. I'll take Kirby.
Yeah.
All right. Ruby.
All right. After that, okay. Right, right. So, uh, okay. So first of all, I want to say thank you everyone for coming out. Um, welcome Scott, welcome Rodney. Um, I want to say thanks to the staff, all the work that they do as well, all the time. And I know Greg, um, he do a lot of work and I appreciate that, David, everyone. So just wanted to mention that. Um, on January the twenty-third, we would have a full worker there here. So, um, if you want to work for, for the county, uh, the full worker with the new election coming up, uh, from three to six P M. It will be here that day. Um, the, uh, the community outreach planning, uh, we had a meeting, um, this past, um, Thursday. And it was a good meeting. I sent all the information to the council and so we're waiting on some of the approvals for the dates. And once we get those days, we will send that information out. Um, that's all I have.
Thanks. Uh, I want to also, uh, I guess add to the piling on, on, on Greg and Daryl, um, and, and it's one thing, you, you kind of expect your public works department to be out whenever there's something like this going on. And there's a bad, or the waters could be washing out or whatever, trees down. You don't expect your fire chief to get up every time something like that happens. And I, I, you know, bragging on Greg a lot because he deserves it. And I want to point out again that we get far more out of Greg than most people get out of the fire chiefs. And the teamwork and, and Greg and Daryl are the best example we have of it. This team that I'm in the city is an amazing group of folks and we get far more out of them than most people could possibly expect. Uh, far higher level quality, far higher level problemless. And I just want to call it out. Every time I have the opportunity, I can thank everybody for all the work you do. Uh, and, and recognize that you are noticed and appreciated all the time. So thank you guys very much for that. And, and also to the council, uh, to the people that have been here for a long time. Rich, you were talking about how many of these means we've been through. Um, and the people that are just starting, people that are back for a second dose, um, it, it takes a, I'm, I'm going to say this the way Richie might take. It's a little kind of stupid. I sit up here and no, I mean, cause this is tough. You get a lot of abuse in this role, but it was incredibly important. And the people that step up and take on the role and people take it seriously and who are open and willing to discuss different ways of doing things and all of that. Uh, it is, it is incredibly important and the whole community owes a debt of gratitude for people that are willing to stand up there and do this. And, and I appreciate it very much and am looking forward to thoughtful conversations about how we make things better. Uh, and, and again, just want to say thank you to every single person up here, especially the people uh, for taking that on. So and, and to their families who, you know, want us these evenings and whatnot, uh, because that is just part of this. Thank you. Thank you. You're awesome. Uh, next up is the German. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm good.
I'm glad we have a second. Uh, all those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Uh, we stand adjourned at seven forty on, uh, today and, uh, we look forward to seeing you next month at our meeting. Uh, we always end with a town hall session. Uh, we have all the experts in the room. Uh, there is something that we did not talk about yet tonight. Uh, that you have a question about or you want to talk to somebody about, feel free to do that now. Or if you want to grab somebody in the room, everybody hangs out for a minute after the meeting. You're welcome to do that as well. Seeing none. Uh, thanks very much for being here. Hope to see you all next month.